Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Galita City Council meeting to order of November the 4th, 2025. If you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions. Ready? Begin.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could do roll call, the City Council?
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protempore Casden?
Here.
And Mayor Perotti?
Here. Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce the Spanish interpreters.
Just a brief bilingual message, un mensaje breve bilingüe. Tenemos interpretación simultánea disponible entre inglés y español para esta presentación. Si gustarían participar o escuchar todo lo que se va a presentar en español, tengo algunos auriculares aquí disponibles para que lo puedan hacer. Pueden alzar la mano, acercarse a mí, estaremos en el junto lateral para todo el evento, toda esta reunión, en cualquier, en caso de cualquier pregunta que tengan. So we have simultaneous interpretation between Spanish and English available for today's meeting. If you would like to follow along in Spanish, participate, listen to everything that's being shared in Spanish, I have some listening devices available for you to do so. You can raise your hand or come up to me. We'll also be in the side room for the entire duration of the meeting with, available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, can we have a report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the one closed session item that was read into the record earlier this evening, there is no reportable action.
Okay. Okay, so I guess at this time, we'll do public forum for anything that is not on our agenda this evening.
I do have two speaker slips. Those of you on the Zoom webinar who speak to a non-agenda item, please use raised hand icon. Our first in-person speaker is Eileen Preston. And all speakers will have three minutes. Podium, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eileen Preston, and I live in Galita, and my comment today is about roads, specifically Cambridge Drive between Berkeley Road and Marbury Drive. Cambridge Drive is a major transit route in Galita, which is used by many drivers throughout the area. I have reviewed the Public Works section of the city of Galita website, specifically capital improvement program. This past weekend, my husband and I attended the gathering at Stow Ranch Yard. We spoke with Councilmember Luis Reyes Martin and Mayor Paula Perotti regarding our concern. There was mention of a two-year public works plan, so I asked when public input could be provided. We referred to Nina Buelna, Public Works Director, who was in attendance. My husband introduced himself to Nina and inquired about this Cambridge Drive segment. Nina stated the segment of Cambridge Drive, which is about 0.15 miles in length, will not be done next year or the next year since it is too expensive. This would imply that all of these decisions have been made. If it is too expensive to repair now, the condition of the road will only be worse and more expensive in three to five years. Meanwhile, people are doing a serpentine to avoid bone jarring and tire damage. While I recognize our road repairs are going to be done throughout Galita, I contend that this stretch of road is worse than any road in Galita which is scheduled to be repaired. If this is not the case, I am interested in looking at a road that would be considered to be in worse condition. I invite you to meet with me at an agreed upon time at Cambridge Drive and Berkeley Road to review the extent of the road damage and see for yourself why it should be on your priority list now. It seems to me that the decision is made to forego repair of Cambridge Drive. On behalf of our neighbors, my husband, and myself, I ask that you review the plan, reconsider your priorities, and include Cambridge Drive, which is in dire need of repair. The public should be included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Gareth Kelly.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Gareth Kelly. I'm the founder and executive director of Galita's newest cultural event, the Wild and Free Film Festival. I'm here tonight to invite you and the entire community to join us the weekend of November 14th through 16th at the Camino Real Cinemas for 30 incredible films spread across three days, along with receptions, industry panels, and special guests. We open Friday, November 14th at 6:30 p.m. with the Central Coast premiere of Checkpoint Zoo from executive producer Leonardo DiCaprio, a film that highlights the bravery of Ukrainians who risked everything to save more than 5,000 animals trapped on the front lines of the war. A post-screening reception will follow at the Plaza Shopping Center, right next to the fish market with light bites and libations. On Saturday, November 15th, we'll have a full day of 20 films across two screens culminating in a special evening event, a 10-year anniversary screening of the award-winning documentary How to Change the World, the story of the pioneers who founded Greenpeace and helped define the modern-day green movement. The film will receive the first-ever Wild and Free Spirit Award, accepted by one of its stars, Greenpeace co-founder Rex Wyler, who will also participate in a Q&amp;A after the screening. And on Sunday, November 16th, we'll celebrate Community Sunday with nine films across two morning blocks, including the California Stories block at 2 p.m., featuring the world premiere of Elwood Mesa Beyond the Bluffs. All films and blocks on Sunday are free admission. It's hard to please everyone, but I dare to say we have films for everyone, from the striking barren beauty of Bolivia to the deep depths of the Galapagos, from animated tales about extinct pigeons to the lesbian seagulls that call our own Channel Islands home. We couldn't be more excited to share this program with the Galita community. I recently heard someone describe Galita as an arts and culture desert. We hope our new festival helps change that narrative. One of my personal goals is to help the city cultivate an environment where arts and culture can truly thrive. Of course, we all want smooth roads, safe neighborhoods, and buses that run on time, but what's the point of all this if we can't take a moment to read a good book, watch a great film, or listen to a soulful song? Beyond enriching our hearts and minds, arts and culture are also powerful economic drivers. Our festival is shining a spotlight on Galita, attracting visitors from around the world, people who will dine here, stay here, shop here. It's a job creator, and we estimate it will generate nearly $100,000 in economic impact this year alone. We're proud to launch the Wild and Free Film Festival here in Galita, and we look forward to welcoming the community through our doors and perhaps putting Galita on the map as home to one of the world's most inspiring film festivals focused on the natural world and environmental storytelling. Our full lineup, schedule, and ticket information are available at wildandfreefilm.org. Thank you all. I hope to see you at the festival.
Thank you.
Our first online speaker is April Reed. Please unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I want to speak about the meeting I had with Councilmember Kiriyako well over a year ago. Councilmember Kiriyako said he did not want to see any of his comments he made to me on social media. This is not social media. Also, he commented on our meeting first, so I feel I have to have a right to defend myself. I asked Councilmember Kiriyako at the meeting how to stop building on Kenwood Village. He said maybe if there was building on Shelby. Well, building on Shelby has been approved, but I have not yet heard anything about not building on Kenwood Village. I even read in the Independent that Galita now has a sufficient number of housing units to satisfy the state, so there should be no reason to fill up all of the animals, protected animals on Kenwood Village, especially since they don't have a wildlife corridor. Also, there should not be ministerial review. Most of the planning commission and staff I have spoken to claim to agree with developing housing monstrosities in Galita. They will not even answer my few questions from September 21st, 2025, despite what Mr. Newkirk falsely claims. The City Council should be responsible for voting on these major developments that could destroy Galita completely in irrevocable ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, that concludes a public forum.
Okay, then I'll close public forum at this point and ask the City Manager for any reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No amendments to the agenda, and I don't have any personal announcements on CM updates, but I am going to ask Kelly Hoover to come up. She's going to do a debrief of the drone show that we had for the Fourth of July, this past Fourth of July, and I think she has a couple other announcements she's going to make, so I will turn it over to Ms. Hoover.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just to give you a brief update on the 2026 Drone Show planning, I'm here with Marcus Martinez, our Spanish engagement specialist. I'm Kelly Hoover, the Community Relations Manager, and this is just meant to be a quick little update for you all on how it went last year and what we're looking at for this year. So, here we are with... Hold on one second. Oh, there we go. All right, here we are for our Fourth of July Drone Light Show. As you all know, you were all there. It was extremely successful for our first-ever one at the Dos Publos High School. So let's take a look at how it went in 2025. It was a free community event at Dos Publos High School from 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. Santa Barbara Airbus provided free shuttles. We had a VIP sponsor area. We had food trucks, DJ, dancing, and entertainment. We had activities, including face painting, carnival games, a photo booth, and more. The night culminated with a 12-minute drone light show with 150 drones. Here's some stats. We had 20 sponsors step up to support our first-ever drone show. We raised $85,750,000. The final event cost us $100,951. We had close to 6,000 people attend, way more than we were anticipating, but now we know. There were 400 people transported via Santa Barbara Airbus to and from the event. We had 35 community volunteers, 15 city staff, and 10 Dos Publos High School students who put this on. We had a Lessons Learned debrief two weeks after the event on July 18th. You can see pictures there. We discussed our favorite moments, what went well, and what we needed to improve. We documented all of that, and we're using the feedback for our 2026 event. And here's what we have so far planned. We are expanding the event to accommodate the large turnout that we now know we are going to get. We are going to open the doors an hour earlier at 5:00, just to give people more time to enjoy the event. We're going to make everything bigger and better, a larger stage, a larger dance floor, more games and entertainment, definitely more food trucks, an expanded VIP area included for sponsors, and we're looking at a potentially paid section for the public, because we had a lot of people say that they would have paid to have a seat, and they would have had appreciated a seat. We are looking at an enhanced drone light show, something different this year. How we're going to make this happen? We're going to hopefully raise $200,000. Fundraising is well underway. We already have Yardi Systems has stepped up with $25,000 to get us started and has offered a $25,000 matching grant. Ergo Motion has returned and is donating and sponsoring, I should say, and we also have Fuel Depot and Santa Barbara Airbus, who's offered to donate money and do the Airbus shuttles for free again for the community. We are going to remain the lead agency at this time. We'll handle fundraising, promotion, agreements, permits, and securing vendors. We are going to bring in an event coordinator, though, to handle logistics, manage the vendors, oversee the event from setup to teardown, post-event follow-up, and help with safety and security. Galita Rotary Club, both the noontime and the nighttime groups, are going to be our volunteer base and are going to recruit and manage event volunteers. So lots more delegating this year. Safety is, of course, the top priority for this event. We're going to work with Neighborhood Services, Dos Publos High School, Galita Police, and County Fire to ensure that all safety protocols are met. We'll have first aid response to be positioned on location again. We'll work with Santa Barbara Airbus, Galita Police, and Neighborhood Services on an improved transportation parking plan for the event, and we will once again send a mailer to the Dos Publos neighborhood with info on the event in advance. And really, at this point, we're looking for sponsors. If you're interested and you're out there listening or watching, please let us know if you want to sponsor. You have a chance to be a part of this great event that brings so much joy to the community and is so much fun. It's really a special group to be a part of. Please let us know if you'd like to join us, and if you all have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions from Council? Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. Well, it was a really wonderful event. So just maybe a couple of questions and a comment. First, on the opening an hour earlier, I was actually going to say open an hour later, just because it seemed like there was a lot of time before the drone show happened, so I don't know. That one, I'm maybe mulling over a little bit. I did get overwhelmingly positive, and you probably talked about this in your debrief, too. If there were a couple areas where there was some question about, like, maybe this could be improved for later, for future years, there were a lot of people who were pretty nervous about how many people were there, just kind of that kind of angst or anxiety that, like, it's really crowded here. So has there been a conversation about, like, what would truly be a safe maximum capacity and planning, or even if we needed to limit it to whatever that capacity is? That's one question I had. And then the exit was challenging, with people feeling, like, even around me, like, really claustrophobic with, like, the funnel that kind of happened. So I don't know if it was that we need more exit paths or just making those more obvious, because that was one area where I was a little nervous, like, I hope nobody trips here and causes an issue, as, you know, hundreds of people are kind of funneling to one exit, or at least what felt like the only exit. Those were the only comments. But, I mean, it was so fun, and people had such a great time, and it was a great community, alternative, family-friendly event, so I'm really glad that we're doing it again next year.
Thank you. Notes taken. Thank you for that.
Mayor Protempore Casden?
I don't really have questions. I just wanted to sort of say how grateful I am that this was able to be pulled out. It was, it felt like such a gap when it went away from Gersh Park, and people came to expect the celebration there. It was part of our identity, and having it come back slightly different, it was just great, though. And having that open area with all of the games and so forth, and food trucks, it was terrific. And, you know, obviously, there are areas you'll be evaluating and enhancing and improving and so forth, but for a first step with all of the things that were going on, good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo some of the comments that I heard here. It was really nice to be in community with people and to have, be able to experience joy and see people someplace other than just, like, on a small screen that we walk around with every day. That was really nice. For our first time out, I thought it was an A-plus kind of, A-plus event, hit it out of the park. For next year, little, little things like having clear designated walkways in that lawn area inside the track. People were just kind of spread out, and so if you were trying to walk, you were kind of like hopping in a circle and kind of bobbing and weaving to try and get out of there, particularly as it started getting dark, became really hard to see to get through. So I think that would be an opportunity for improvement, to just kind of come up with clear, kind of designated roped off, like, okay, this is a walkway. I think that would be a good improvement. In terms of the start time, I'm kind of agnostic about it. I think if you're going to have more activities and more things to do earlier, then I could be fine keeping the same, the same time or starting a little bit earlier. Otherwise, I would keep it the same or even start it a little bit later. If you start it too much later, though, I'm going to be worried that people are going to get stuck trying to find parking and not be able to get there. The only other suggestion I would, I would make is to, to make the, have visible places where people know what the shuttle schedule is. You know, some people, you know, maybe wanted to take an Uber there, but maybe take a shuttle back, so what about those folks? When you, when you have an event like this where you can kind of trickle in, rideshare works really good getting in, but when it all ends at the same time and everyone is leaving at the same time, suddenly, you know, you get the surge pricing and all those kinds of things, or long, long wait times, and people get dropped and that kind of thing. So those would be the only real suggestions for improvement I have, apart from what was shared earlier, but A-plus event. That was great for our first year.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you, and I want to thank my fellow council members for their comments. They covered most of mine. I guess I just want to offer support to staff in terms of, to the extent that in our role as, as council members, particularly for the, for the neighborhood around Dos Pueblos, if we can help, I'm sure that there'd be community members interested in volunteering, so, you know, sharing those opportunities and also facilitate, you know, communication in terms of any, you know, impacts and so forth. I'm happy to help, so thank you very much.
And I will echo what others have said. That was a great drone, first drone show. I was so shocked to see how many people were there. It really did say to me the, the community was ready for a gathering, and, you know, a drone show was perfect for the Fourth of July. I've heard nothing but praise about it afterwards. We didn't have to worry about our dogs and cats running away and smoke in the air and on and on and on, all the things that you get to hear afterwards with fireworks. So, yeah, good job. Thank you, Kelly, and your staff, and thank you to our city staff, and thank you to all the volunteers and all the sponsors for making this a reality. I was concerned that we weren't going to, I mean, you kept saying, I'm going to do it, I'm going to be able to do this, and you did. You pulled it together and with a lot of help and support, and thank you. Thank you. It was a great show.
Thank you. Excited to have one under our belts and just make this one better, and all your comments are very important, and we'll definitely be considering all of those and making it better for this year.
Great. Thank you.
And I cannot leave without talking about one more thing. Gareth Kelly of Wild and Free Film Festival mentioned it, but I definitely want to turn your attention to, not this weekend, but next weekend, Sunday at 2:00, we are going to premiere Elwood Mesa Beyond the Bluffs, something that our Galita community can be very proud of. Please come out and watch this movie. We're one of five short films that are going to be in this Short Stories block. It's going to be at Camino Real Cinemas, and it's going to be fun to all watch this together. It's a powerful story, the story of Elwood Mesa, as you all know, and just to see it on the screen is, is pretty special. And this is in line with the 20-year anniversary of Elwood Mesa and when the city took over ownership to preserve it as open space. So it's a very inspiring story. You'll leave feeling good and happy, and we all need that right now, so please come join us at the theater next Sunday. And we do have a movie poster. And we even have a tagline, because some places change us forever. So come watch the film. Thank you.
All right. Yay. Wow, that was a hard act to follow. That was great. Okay, I think we're moving on to consent.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is Item A1, approval of the City Council meeting minutes of October 21, 2025, the acceptance of the August 2025 check register, Item A3, acceptance of the September 2025 check register, and Item A4, authorization of overdrive digital content purchase for Library Division in fiscal years 2025-26 and 2026-27.
Thank you. Council wishes to pull any item from consent? I'm not seeing any. Do we have any speakers on consent?
Yes, any member of the public wishes to speak to consent item, please use raised hand icon, and I will call on you. I'm seeing none, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to improve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please lock in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protempore Casden?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye. It's a a's habit. Thank you.
That will take us to Item B, Item B1, Central Coast Community Energy Annual Update.
All right. Who's going to kick this off? Ms. Murray?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Here tonight, we have staff members from Central Coast Community Energy, also known as 3CE, to present you with an annual update. Afterwards, of course, we'll have time for any questions and discussion.
Thank you.
So I'd like to So I'd like to introduce Spencer Brant to kick off the presentation, and after him, Doss Williams will be speaking.
All right, good evening, Mayor Perotti and councilmembers. My name is Spencer Brant, and I'm the Community Relations Manager with Central Coast Community Energy, and I'm here today to give you an annual update on 3CE's programs and activities. But before I begin, I want to extend our gratitude to Councilmember Reyes Martin, who serves on our Policy Board of Directors, and Mr. Imhoff, who serves as an alternate on our Operations Board. Okay, thank you. 3CE is the public agency that sources energy on behalf of 1.2 million people on the Central Coast. So that means we work in partnership with Southern California Edison, and they continue to manage the transmission and distribution of that energy. So while they are maintaining the lines and the infrastructure, we are purchasing energy from projects like wind, solar, and geothermal. We service 30 cities across five counties, and this January, the County of San Luis Obispo, along with the City of Atascadero, became our two newest member agencies. Next slide, please. In 2024, we delivered 409 megawatts of renewable energy. That's enough to power more than 350,000 homes. By doing so, we are helping meet our region's climate goals, avoiding 445,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions, which is the equivalent of taking over 105,000 gas-powered cars off the road. Next slide, please. We are on a path to deliver 100% clean and renewable energy by 10 to 15 years ahead of the state's climate goals. By October of 2028, renewable energy is projected to make up at least 69% of our energy mix. And this number reflects contracts that we have secured, so that number could rise should additional contracts be signed. Next slide, please. This year especially, I'd like to take a moment to talk about battery energy storage systems, as this is something that we have been getting a lot of questions about. Energy storage is essential for California's transition to carbon-free energy. Batteries can store renewable energy during the day, and then they release it when we need it most, during those peak evening hours. At a utility scale, they help the grid reduce our reliance on fossil fuels, and they help in lower, help lower electricity costs for our customers. For individual customers, home batteries, or batteries at the business, can provide backup power and resilience, as well as a way to take greater control over energy usage to save money. Next slide, please. So to illustrate this, I want to look at what California's energy mix looked like Labor Day Weekend 2022. You may remember this day, it was really hot in Galita, it was almost 90 degrees. This was the occasion of California's last Flex Alert, which is a statewide call to reduce energy usage to avoid rolling blackouts. And what you can see on this graph is that most of the energy comes from the red, which is fossil fuels, followed by green, which is renewables. You can see how they spike during daylight, and then they reduce as the sun goes down, right as energy usage goes up. You'll also see a tiny orange line at the bottom, that's batteries charging when they go below the line in the earlier hours of the day, and then on the right-hand side of the graph at the top, that's the, the orange is batteries being deployed onto the grid. So now, keep this image in mind, and let's go to the next slide, and we'll look at a more recent picture. This was July 4th of last year, the green renewable energy bar has grown higher, and more solar has come online, and the big thing to note is that this time, there wasn't an emergency. At the same time, we've been able to reduce reliance on fossil fuels, particularly the most expensive type of energy, the peaker plants, which turn on during that peak evening demand, and we're meeting this need through energy storage. You can see the batteries going below the line and charging earlier in the day, and then deploying in the evening. So I hope that this helps give a little bit of context for your council and for the public about why energy storage is so critical. Next slide, please. We've received a number of questions from community members about the safety of energy storage, and so I want to highlight several key facts. First, 3CE does not have any power purchase agreements with indoor battery facilities. All of the battery projects that we contract for must use containerized systems with setbacks, many have individual fire suppression units built into them, and all must follow the latest fire and building code requirements. The safety data that we can see of these measures in the more recent years is very encouraging. Even as global battery deployment increased by 25,000%, incidents of battery failures dropped by 98%. We know that safety is paramount, and so 3CE supported state legislation this year, Senate Bill 283 from Senator Laird. We joined the League of Cities in supporting that legislation, which established even tougher battery building code standards for the storage industry. And I'm pleased to share that that legislation was signed into law by the governor in September. Next slide, please. We have made investments in a variety of type of storage technology, including the Willrock Energy Storage Center, which utilizes compressed air to power turbines on demand. Once it's completed, this will be the largest compressed air storage project in the world. We also have a number of solar plus storage projects that are under development, and Victory Pass Solar and Storage recently came online, this was last year, May of 2024. Together, these projects represent enough energy to power 250,000 homes and businesses on the Central Coast. Next slide, please. We know that delivering energy and keeping the lights on is only part of the equation. Connecting with our communities is a critical part of our mission, and so in 2024, our outreach team sponsored events, hosted webinars, and conducted workshops, including one right here in the city of Galita, and we spoke with residents about our energy programs. We've partnered with community-based organizations, trade groups, and chambers of commerce to educate the public about our offerings, and we've enhanced our customer service hotline to be capable of providing customer assistance in over 150 languages, including English, Spanish, and Mixteco. Next slide, please. These are our energy programs that help provide residential customers with tools that accelerate electrification, and they put money back in people's pockets. So our flagship program that you may have heard of is Electrify Your Ride, which provides up to $4,000 for the purchase of a qualifying electric vehicle. Additional programs help cover the cost of electrifying home appliances, like HVAC and water heaters, and we also have programs to assist with the cost of installing a home battery, as well as targeted rebates available for our agricultural sector. Next slide, please. And we have programs available to public agencies that help cover the cost of everything from replacing fleet vehicles, to planning what that fleet looks like, and installing the infrastructure, the charging, the electrical work that needs to get done to electrify. We also have an electric bus program often utilized by school districts and transit agencies, and our Reach Codes program helps provide technical assistance to city staff when it comes to adopting Reach Codes. Next slide, please. And so I'm sure you're really curious, what does that mean for the city of Galita? This is a breakdown of the funds distributed, and you'll also see this year, we're including funds to a benchmark jurisdiction to give you an idea of how the city measures up. So since 3CE began service to city of Galita customers in 2020, our energy programs have put over $1.1 million back in residents' pockets. This year, for the city, 3CE paid out $15,000 for 17 Level 2 chargers right here at City Hall, as well as an electric vehicle for pool car usage. The good news is that $300,000 per agency, so for the city, continues to be available per year for the cost of installing these electric vehicle chargers and purchasing the electric vehicles themselves, both light duty and heavier duty. So we find many agencies are utilizing these funds to help meet the California Air Resources Board Advanced Clean Fleet mandates. We also find other member agencies are installing public-facing chargers as economic development tools to help drive, drive traffic to commercial areas of the community. Finally, I want to hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Doss Williams, who will give an update on 3CE's legislative advocacy.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, it's such an honor to be here with you again. In January, I was asked to set up a policy and advocacy unit for Central Coast Community Energy, so that we can lobby and advocate on your behalf, and on the behalf of the people of Galita, for clean and affordable energy at a state and local level. Of course, we found very quickly that we needed to do it at a federal level, too, so that is now in our bailiwick, and we now have a three-person team, Spencer, myself, a colleague up in the Northern Territory, that you can go to if one of those policy questions has come up, or you want to know how clean energy is doing in America or the state. We also are setting up an office in downtown Santa Barbara, will be, have enough space that if any of you are down there for your job or for something else, and you need some space to do some public work in, that you can come and be part of that. So on the federal level, I don't want to start off with the downer, downer stuff, but the federal mega bill, known as HR1, or the big beautiful bill, has immense consequences for energy customers. The bill eliminated the individual tax credits for new and used electric vehicles after September 30th, and for home energy upgrades after December 31st, 2025. Our customers often stack the rebates we provide with these federal incentives. So we, the good news is, we saw very much a surge in advance of that, of the use of our rebates. And I should just remind the members of the public that some brands either attempted to buy a stock of their own cars to be able to offer the lower price with the federal rebate for a longer period of time, or they mark down their cars. So if you are interested in an EV, it's not too late. Both Ford, GM, and Hyundai are still offering basically the same prices that they were, at least for a limited time, before they run out of stock. And it now is the time, and this, my message to you and to the members of the public is, use those incentives if you can before the end of the year. While it is difficult to maybe to complete some jobs and interconnection before December 31st, a battery project you would have to start tomorrow, but other projects like a heat pump water heater, or a heat pump, very accomplishable to do that before the end of the year, and access the 30% tax credit as well as our rebate. Of even more consequence in the large run, in the long run, in HR1 is the elimination of the tax credits for utility-scale solar and wind projects. They, any that have not broken ground by the end of 2026. Wind and solar are cheaper and faster to build than natural gas alternatives, which means that in the absence of the credit, less projects will be built, energy prices will rise. To address this, here in California, we sponsored legislation that will promote affordability and renewability. We were part of a coalition that supported the Pathways Initiative, otherwise known as Assembly Bill 825. This bill will allow for a regional electrical market, that includes California and 10 other Western states, so will allow California to sell our, what you could say is, as we get the more decarbonized, in the middle of the day, we have a larger amount of solar. And you can't have too little power on the grid, or too much. So the system operator will, in the middle of the day, tell some folks to turn off their facilities. A regional market would allow us to keep those facilities on and sell energy that we, as ratepayers, have already paid for, thereby increasing affordability in the long run. Very happy to report that this bill was signed into law by the governor in September. It will not be a panacea, and it will not be overnight, but it does give some light at the end of the tunnel, and we will continue to advocate, particularly for issues about the PCIA and resource adequacy, in order to have the potential to lower the growth of costs for our, your constituents and our customers. Now, that's all I have for you today, you can do the next slide. If you or members of the public have any questions, I've shared our contact information and invite you to reach out to me directly, I'm not on that slide, but, but I'm dwilliams@3ce.org. Most of you have my cellphone already, but that's 805-637-7711. Thank you, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, good to see you. Questions from council? Councilmember Reyes Martine?
Thank you, thank you both for coming and presenting to council. It was really nice to go up to San Luis Obispo for the annual meeting that took place over the course of like, a day and a half. A lot of really great information, I think I left very confident that the whole team at 3CE has real experts in this field, that you're all working on so much, and as you heard, the, the region is expanding in terms of your, your members, and I think that's also a testament to the confidence that those agencies have, and the value of joining together. And I think the, the natural kind of next step for the organization was this kind of advocacy arm, because you see, there's so much that impacts us, that's happening in Sacramento and in DC, and it makes a lot of sense to incorporate that legislative advocacy, so that we can all ensure, and we as council members can go to our residents and tell them, you know, why this is a good program, why this city's part of it, what they get out of it, not just in that we all care about these climate goals, but also the affordability piece is really important, the resilience piece is really important, all the, you know, ways that these different programs enhance their everyday lives, that's all really important. So I really appreciated all of the work that the whole team does to share that information, I think there's more, there's more opportunity to share more of it. I think the word is getting out, but I want to, I want to pass San Luis Obispo and some of those benchmark metrics you showed, or at least get closer to it. So the more that we can do to share with our residents what they can take advantage of, I think will be great. If I had a question to ask you, you talked a little bit about this, but one of the questions I get from residents is, why, why should I care about 3CE, or why is it important? So what would you say, especially on the affordability piece, whether it's now or in the long run, what are some good messages that we can take to residents about why it's good for them, for the city of Galita to be part of 3CE?
On the affordability end, I think the most important thing that sets us apart is, we are all the time trying to figure out ways that your customers and, that our customers and your constituents can avoid paying us as much money, by taking advantage of our programs and lowering their energy costs in their home, or converting their, their home to their fuel and lowering their overall gas, gas and energy bill. On renewables, what's really important is that CCAs, and of course, 3CE is a, is a CCA, and as is the city of Santa Barbara's CCA, have really been the driving force in the last few years behind the continued investment in utility-scale renewable energy. It would have hit a doldrums if it had been just up to the IOUs, because they had already hit many of their procurement targets.
Can you remind us what IOUs are?
Sorry, Investor on Utilities, I shouldn't use acronyms, thank you, councilmember. Thank you, councilmember. And so because they, they had been around longer, they had already hit some of those procurement targets in state law, but because CCAs were new, we have carried the water for renewable energy in the last few years. So if you want to be part of the momentum of that renewable revolution, being part of a CCA is the best place to be. And I'll give you one example, just, you know, people only hear bad news, but in the first six months of this year, solar energy expanded 37.6% in America, the biggest increase ever. By the end of the year, I wouldn't be surprised if that's well over a 50% expansion. I was just out on behalf of 3CE touring one of our next facilities to come online. It's San Zia, it's the largest wind power project in America. To give you a scale difference, the Lompoc Wind, I think, is about 120 megawatts. This is 1,000, this, sorry, this is 3,000 megawatts. And we procured 200 megawatts on your behalf. And of course, the times are weird, you know, they didn't want to make a big deal about their powering up, but it's, clean power is still winning. That means our communities are winning, and we intend to make sure they continue to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor Tim Kethin?
Yeah, thank you. So first, I wanted to ask about that slide that had the city-by-city spending on the different types of activities, and I think you had said first, there's a $300,000 cap. Is that what I heard, per city?
Yeah, and you already blew through it last year, but you can blow through it again if, if you can see that that adds up to more than 300,000. Often when your staff come up with great proposals, we are able to make exceptions if not all of the budget has been used.
Oh, okay, so if we've already, that sort of takes away my question. I was thinking, how are we, how do we, you know, do more outreach, or do, you know, coordinate or do something, but we already did it. All right. Moving on. I had one other question, and this is, I see Mr. Imhoff in the, in the audience there. And one of our work items coming up is on where does it make sense for battery storage in the city? And, you know, there's so many, as you pointed out, there's so many virtues for battery storage in terms of resilience, in terms of cost savings eventually, and in terms of, for those who want our tech businesses that want stable energy and not to see fluctuations and so forth. But there's also, as you, I'm sure you know, a lot of people have considerable fear, even when, you know, we say, no, no, that particular project you're thinking of is an older technology and so forth. I guess my question is, how much information and data and so forth do you have that we, that essentially could inform that work item that we have that would, you know, kind of move it along so it's easy peasy?
I'll just say, you know, first of all, Goleta, in my view, was one of the places where people first really wrestled ethically with, what do we do about a place where people want to restart a natural gas facility, and what do we do instead? And I think it really was very grassroots change, the reason why there are existing best facilities in Goleta, is because people really went, okay, it's going to be one or the other here. And what we do is we see those benefits most stark when we look at places where we're doing batteries on-site of a, a natural gas facility. When we do that, we do that to advantage the battery facility in interconnection over the natural gas facility, and we see dramatic decreases of the operations of the natural gas facility and dramatic air quality benefits to the communities. So I just want you to, that, that's one of the best reasons, is because every time one of them is, is approved anywhere in the state, there is an air quality benefit when, when Americans die every year from respiratory issues surrounding fossil fuels. So that's the, the best. In terms of their safety, I think one of the most important things to remember is an overwhelming amount, an overwhelming percentage of the failures have been one chemistry, nickel, manganese, cobalt, and one design, stacking indoors. That is now very obvious to policymakers and to the market, that that is not the right kind of design. The kind of facilities that have had these problems, like Moss Landing and like the facility in San Diego, could not be permitted in state law right now, and they can't be permitted in Goleta either. And so the, the, the chemistry of these facilities now are harder to heat up, therefore harder to have ignition, and the most important thing is the design of them. You saw it most recently at a facility where, you know, it was more of the normal design. This was still an older facility in Parkfield. In that location, the, the fire only caught one of the, of the units. It heated up one of the adjacent ones, but didn't ignite, and it sort of performed like these things should perform under the worst of conditions. And it was, I just spoke to the supervisor from that area last Monday, and he said, look, it, it happened, and it ended up not being a problem for the surrounding community, and the surrounding community now is not, no longer concerned. So it sort of proved that the difference in design, even when something goes dramatically wrong, creates a much higher level of public safety.
Okay.
And, you know, the other thing that is important is, you know, at Moss Landing, there's been extensive testing, 100 air quality monitoring stations, drinking water monitoring in tanks showed no risk to public health. The air quality monitoring stations were by the US EPA and their air quality management district. Monitoring indicated no risk to public health throughout the incident, and two stations that detected hydrogen fluoride, those did not exceed California's very stringent Calo Shu limitations.
Well, I guess all of this will be incorporated, and any data that you guys have, any research we can incorporate, because I, I think it's, it's a technology we want to, the public to be comfortable with and embrace, and knowing that it's safer than having the, you know, the diesel plant next door, and better in many ways, so, because that's, at least one of ours, that's the discussion, that they're familiar with a diesel place, and it's less threatening than, you know, battery storage of this sort, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, nice to see you, folks. Just a couple of questions. So the district that I represent has sort of a tale of two cities. I have Old Town, and then I have a lot of the new technology. I've got like five different Google offices. So I'm going to try and ask a question kind of tailored to each. For Old Town, we have a lot of apartment buildings, kind of densely packed, and they're older, they're built in the 50s, built in the 60s, built, a lot of them built in the early 70s. And increasingly, you have the residents that their vehicle is their job, it's a work truck, right? But then you have other folks that are trying to be that first generation to adopt EVs, and the folks that are, you know, not in a single-family home are really at a disadvantage. Is there anything that 3CE is doing, either through the, the new advocacy that you, that you have, or through some of your programmatic solutions, that can be a resource for folks that are trying to get their landlord to elect, you know, to put charging in their apartment building as maybe a part of an opportunity to upgrade their electrical, or for condo conversions, like old apartments that got converted to condos, to be able to get their HOAs to want to actually to do this?
Councilmember, you have put your finger on a very important problem, and a, and something that is slowing down what is a needed adoption of EVs. And I've, I've gone and called property owners in Goleta that were doing remodels and said, hey, don't forget to take some of our money and put chargers for your residents, and they'll, they'll give a response like, oh yeah, we already thought of that, we're installing three. I'm like, you have 100 apartments, right? You're, you're just not thinking about the next 10 years, you're thinking about last year. And so it is, I mean, it is, it is a challenge. And I would just say that the public right-of-way is not, is something that should not be ignored as part of that strategy. Charging during the day has been shown, it's a study by Brattle, to have cost benefits for energy for everyone, whether they're an EV owner or not. Again, it goes back to the fact that you can sell more energy during the day when it's cleaner and cheaper, and less at night, when it's expensive and dirty. And, and so if, you know, you access our funds to, to do chargers, sometimes doing it in the public right-of-way has a lot of backend problems, but sometimes, if you have good electrical infrastructure closely, close by, it works great. And since you're doing so much roadwork anyway these days, which is a great sign, it's something to think about. There are designs now for chargers and street lamps in one unit. There are multiple ways that you guys could, could offer charging to the public, and again, you can, if you don't want to have to have a cost burden when it's expensive, you can constrain the pipe or even shut it off in evening hours, and offer it during the day when, when you want, for the greater good of everybody's prices, people to be charging.
Before I ask my next question, we may have a staff member that wants to jump in.
So I also want to point out that we utilized the Reach Codes Program for public agencies to help us with technical assistance on the EV Reach Code that you adopted last fall, and they will be bringing to you for readoptions soon. And so that also has requirements for those major renovations to install EV chargers or the infrastructure work for people to plug them in. Also, there is state legislation that was passed years ago that, not having in front of me, but essentially requires landlords to allow renters to install chargers. Now, the landlords don't have to pay for it, but it means as a renter, you can say, I want to get this charger installed, I'll pay for the installation in the charger, and the landlord's supposed to allow it. So those two things, paired with the community programs that are available to our residents, in particular, the Electrify Your Ride, those can really be incentives that we're trying to increase this, especially in workplaces and multifamily housing. We'll continue to promote them.
Thank you. Thank you.
And councilmember, if I can add one more thing, for renters, the Electrify Your Ride charger incentive is also available, as well as the electrical readiness rebate. So we can be a source of funds to help that renter that wants to go to their property owner and ask for that installation.
Thank you. All right. So my next question, kind of moving more to the, to the west in my district. So we have, you know, a lot of our residents have one, one kind of idea of what they think of when they think of electrical reliability, will the lights turn on when I hit, hit the switch? And I remember when we first went to 3CE, there was a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot, but there was at least some concern of, oh no, will the lights consistently stay on? Will it be reliable? Will it work? Seems like so far, things are working. But some of our customers in Goleta and the technology world, reliability means something entirely different to them. Mr. Brandt, we were part of a presentation a few months ago with the Local Chamber of Commerce that was talking about these challenges. Can you just talk a little bit, either one of you, or both of you, how, how is 3CE partnering with Edison and others to ensure that Goleta can have a more reliable, more stable grid, not just for our regular-paying customers, but for the folks that, you know, a tenth of a second of an outage that, you know, the light might not even flicker, can actually cost them tens of thousands of dollars plus time when they're creating chips and doing a lot of these other innovations that are, you know, providing our community with really good, high-paying jobs?
I think one of the best ways that they can do, do so is acquiring a battery. And if they want to save money, participating in our real-time pricing pilot. So right now, they're, it's only in PG&E territory, but we're advocating that it would be extended to Southern California Edison territory. And this pilot essentially allows you to war game whether you could save money by switching to what is the real price. So let me, you know, illustrate, during the day, energy is cheap and very clean, carbon-free, often six, eight hours a day, nine days out of every 10. So, I mean, it's amazing. The grid is completely different than it was 10 years ago. It all goes to hell as it's, as the sun starts going down. And right now, we're operating off of 30%, about 30% batteries, and about 25%, 20% renewable, and the rest is dirty energy. And that's true of the whole state. And the cost differential in what people pay if they're on time of use is about three to one between those two times. So you save a lot of money by using energy during the day, but the cost to us is often nine to one between those two. And so, you know, the, the, the more consumer prices look like real prices, the more then there's that, that price incentive to get that battery and shed your load from four to 10 PEA.
Thank you. You already addressed my question about safety, so I'm done.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, for those of you on the Zoom who are, who wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you. I do have Kyle Richards. If you please unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes.
I knew he'd be there.
Who's that guy?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hello, everyone, Kyle Richards. I'm a resident of Old Town, Goleta. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight, it was great. Thank you to Spencer, Brandt, and Das Williams. I appreciate hearing what you have to say about how 3CE is going. I want to also thank Councilmember Reyes Martine for serving as our city's representative on the 3CE Policy Board, which I had held previously. You know, having a seat at the table and a voice in the governance of the organization was one of the important factors of why Goleta joined 3CE from the beginning. So I'm really gratified to see that we continue to be involved and engaged in that. You know, the other reasons I'll just review for history's sake, besides the seat at the table, were that, you know, we were expecting lower on-average rates, which I think has been confirmed if you compare what the energy rates are offered by 3CE compared to the investor-owned utility, Southern California Edison, they are on average lower. We were also looking at, you know, community programs to put some of the money from the, you know, what would have been profit in the, in the pockets of investors back into the pockets of our community members. And so as we saw here tonight, we've put back investment, invested over a million dollars back into Goleta through those community back into Galita through those community programs, including the 17 chargers at City Hall, thank you very much, which I've used, and the Electrify Your Ride program, which I've also benefited from by, you know, providing refunds and rebates back into the hands of people who were buying electric vehicles, among other programs. So it's so gratifying to see that also that we're, you know, well ahead of the state's renewable energy goals. This was one of the other goals that we had in joining 3CE. And so we're well ahead of that. And as was mentioned, we're on schedule to be at 100% renewable. I'm not sure how many years ahead of the state target, many years. So I'm so excited to see that Galita's participation in this program has really, really panned out the way we had hoped. And I'm happy to see that it's expanded in recent years to encompass virtually the entire region from Santa Cruz through Santa Barbara counties. Lastly, I just want to mention as a plug, I serve as the Area Two Representative on the Santa Barbara City College Board of Trustees, which represents most of the area of City of Galita. And I'll just report that SBCC is moving forward with a combined solar and battery microgrid project, which we are excited about, and especially with regard to its potential to provide community resilience hub during times of emergency where the campus at City College may act as a resilience center in case we have another debris flow, fire. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kyle.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to tell trustee Richards we really are inspired by the microgrid proposal that he's putting forward and that I very much miss cart-pulling in the bolt up to the 3CE meetings with him.
Well, thank you both so much. I think this is a good time to have this conversation. Excuse me. And, yeah, I really appreciate all the information that you shared with us. Thank you. Good to see you both.
I have one other question, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just, one other. How much do you see that from homeowners, when they get the bill and there's the separate parts, are they recognizing, you know, here's... Is your microphone on? Oh, yeah, it's on. Are they recognizing that it's not one entity? And is, are you guys sometimes getting blamed for the utilities? Are there ways, if so, that you've considered how it could be done differently or better?
I think the answer is yes, sometimes. I think there is still room to improve and the number of people who know that we serve them and that we are providing energy on their behalf. And so usually, the way I try to explain it to folks is, we're your energy provider. We buy energy on your behalf. You still get billed by Southern California Edison. But when that Edison generation charge, they used to have a generation charge, they don't have a generation charge anymore for most Galita customers. Now it's a 3CE generation charge. And that usually begins the process. And because of, predominantly because of wildfire mitigation, and I, we, at our annual meeting, we were presented by, our keynote speaker was a former member of the PUC that was also the former area EPA head. And she showed a great slide on where most of the embedded cost increases in energy are coming from. And it's predominantly wildfire mitigation and wildfire lawsuits. And that is the big one. And yes, it sometimes is difficult having that associated with clean energy. In the long run, our clean energy is going to make things more stable, not less. But in the meantime, there, the wildfire mitigation fund was renewed by the legislature. There will be continued cost pressure upward, and we're scrambling to fight on your behalf so that it will be more stable than it has been.
Well, I guess the other thing aside from just stability is that people don't confuse one for the other and see costs rising and say, oh, it's because they switched and now we're using that, you know, green energy. And if we were just using coal, we wouldn't have all these cost increases. And, you know, if there's a way to just make it clear where the nexus is.
Thank you, councilmember, for that feedback. And I would direct members of the public to our joint rate mailer. This was sent out to all of our customers' households via snail mail, I believe about three months ago, but it's also available on our website. And it allows customers to see a direct comparison between our generation rates and SCE's generation rates, so that you can get a very specific breakdown of who you'd be better off with from a price perspective.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that'll take us to our next item, which is item C1, First Reading of an Ordinance Adding Chapter 2.20 Entitled Public Art Review Board to Title II of the City of Galita Municipal Code.
Yes. Are you getting in there? Evening.
Blake Markham, Management Analyst here in our City Manager's Office. Happy to be with you today to talk about our Public Art Review Board ordinance. As a bit of background, as you remember, council adopted the public art policy on October 7th, and staff promised to return with an ordinance codifying the public art advisory body at our next meeting. Based on the council's decision on October 7th, the advisory body consists of three art advisory members and two members of the DRB. So that constitutes a new advisory body. And so the ordinance before the council tonight codifies the body dubbed the Public Art Review Board, their operations, qualifications, and membership. So that is basically all I have in terms of a presentation until we get to next steps. And staff is here for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Maybe just a comment. Thank you so much for getting us here. I know we're all excited to see this. And at the Coffee and Community event this weekend, we even had some attendees who asked specifically about this, and we're really excited about it and wanted to know, when will we know more about how to apply for one of these positions? I'm sure that's part of the next step, but I wanted to share that, that there's public excitement about it, too.
Great.
Great. So we'll start with, tonight's action is the actual changes in the ordinances that would allow that to occur. We're planning on coming back, I'm thinking, two weeks or at the next meeting with an enabling resolution establishing the stipends and all the other kind of logistics that would be involved with that. I think shortly after that, we'll put a call out for interested parties to advertise kind of how you do for your other bodies that help advise the city council. So I would think probably by like January would be a pretty reasonable thought to have at least a set of interviews to start, and then hopefully fully seeded by February. The holidays may bump into that a little bit, but assuming tonight's action goes forward, we still want to come back at the second reading. And from there, there'll be 31 days after that, so we try to take advantage and side-by-side track this item.
Mayor Protem Kazdin, do you have a question?
Yeah. So it does describe in here the fee that's expected, the user fee, of $1,791. And obviously, that would be very limiting for... So would you describe what the plan is as far as how you're going, who's going to have to pay that, or when they're going to have to pay that, and when would it be waived and so forth?
Yes. So at the first time that we brought the public art policy item before council, we brought up the fee. It was council's direction at that time that for public art projects funded or, you know, spearheaded by the city, that the fee would be waived. For art projects that are on private developments but that are public-facing, the council did not indicate at that time that y'all wanted a fee waiver for that. But it will be reexamined as we go into the user fee updates process. And we do want to make sure that we're cognizant of setting it to, you know, have cost recovery, but also allow for public art projects to take place and not be prohibitive, as you described.
Yeah, so included in the staff report towards the end of the discussion section, we do talk about incorporating a user fee for design review, public art projects on private development. We obviously want to make sure that, we don't know how many of these projects we're actually going to get in any given time, but we do want to create a mechanism to allow either a discount to incentivize. The easiest one would be, you know, my workaround would be like, let's just give them $1,000, and then now it's city-funded, right? There could be a way of doing it that way. But in general, what we want to do is show that there is a cost related to going to the Design Review Board or any agents, or anybody, and that the accounting for that needs to be shown, either as a credit by using the grant proceeds to pay for that, which would seem kind of ridiculous and just kind of an accounting move, or blanket waive the fee if it's in line with the policy that's been adopted by council.
Okay. So to be determined forthcoming.
So right now, it's very clear for city-funded or city-initiated, city-owned public art projects. The one that you're speaking about is if a private landowner wanted to do something on their wall that was actually public-facing, that's the one where we're going to try to make sure that the fees are reasonable and incentivize art and not make it cost prohibitive.
Well, likewise, I mean, I imagine, is this possible? You would put out a call saying, anyone with space walls, et cetera, lawns, rooftops, with, you know, we're going to have our theme unicorns. And, you know, if you're painting a unicorn on your wall, that might be an example of something that we could be waiving because it's a city-sponsored sort of thing.
Absolutely. That would be the intent of the city-funded slash city-owned public art spaces.
Okay. And where we have yet to decide is if somebody just on their own has a picture of unicorns on their wall, it would depend on the picture. If it's unicorns smoking cigarettes or vaping, maybe not. Is that...
Yeah, that would be the whole point of having the review.
Not an underage unicorn, just so you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you, because that was my question, too. Uh, councilmember Carriaco.
Yes, I also wanted to ask about unicorns.
Oh, no.
No. And you kind of, you kind of already touched on this, but if you could just maybe say it just a little bit more clearly for the record. For the two, I think there's two mural projects that are participating in the Pride of Police Grant Program. Nothing that we're doing here is going to change their process in any way. The process that they knew they were getting themselves into when they went for the grant and, you know, started working on their proposals is the same process.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us about that, councilmember Carriaco. Those grants were awarded, I believe, in early May of this year, so six months ago, with the intent and the purpose of actually having those go forward under the existing framework at the time. As you can tell, this is tonight's the first reading, then we have the second reading, then we have 31 days after. And so it would be unfair, I think, to have, you know, the kind of the field goal post moved in this case. So our plan under staff is to continue under the previous or the existing one as of right now.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, for those of you on the Zoom webinar who wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I'm seeing none, mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you again for putting this all together. I know the first...
Oh, I just, Kyle Richards just put his hand up.
Oh, good.
Kyle Richards, please go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, this is Kyle Richards, and thank you for this item tonight. I want to just thank the council for your support of public art in the city. And I want to, in particular, thank you for the passage of the public art policy last month and the establishment of this Public Art Review Board. You know, public art has always been an important issue to me, and I'm really happy to see the city moving forward with the establishment of these guidelines and these policies. I think it really does elevate the issue of public art in our community. It gives, shines a light on it, it gets people involved in it, it gets people engaged and talking about it. And I'm really appreciative of the funds that have been dedicated through staff time and through the other issues that will be required to implement the program. I think these are all good uses of city funds. So thank you very much. I appreciate your work with this.
Thank you.
And I have no other speakers, mayor.
Okay. Well, I just want to, again, I know that in the beginning, when we first started discussing this, we were kind of all over the place on which, which committee and where it should go. And I think we came up with a really great solution, and I appreciate all the work you put into this. Thank you. Okay. Oh, a motion. That would be important.
I'm happy to make it.
Okay.
I'll move that we introduce and conduct first reading by title only, and waive further reading of ordinance number 25, next in line, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Adding Chapter 2.20 Entitled Public Art Review Board to Title II of the Galita Municipal Code, and finding that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, councilmembers, please lock in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Carriaco?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Por Kazdin?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye. I just have it. Thank you. Okay.
That'll bring us to our next item, which is item C2, Dissolution of the Standing Naming Committee and Adoption of an Updated City of Galita Naming Policy.
Good evening, again.
You're back.
Yes. So just as some short background on this item, council directed staff to reexamine the city's naming policy back in 2021. The purpose of the staff's reexamination is to modernize the city's process for reviewing naming proposals for parks and facilities. We were cognizant of maintaining public transparency and council oversight, and we wanted to try to improve some administrative efficiency. The proposed updates that are before you tonight are in the resolutions, resolution, rather, and the actions are to dissolve the standing naming committee and bring naming opportunities to our existing boards and commissions for an advisory review before going to the council for final adoption. We also recommend removing the commemorative objects policy from the naming policy as it stands. The existing naming policy kind of felt like it was two different things at once, and so we felt since we're already reexamining it, it might be a time to take a look at that. And as we're updating our city's sponsorship policy, we plan to re-envision the commemorative objects policy and program and incorporate it into that updated policy, which is coming to the council. We're scheduled to come in spring of 2026. So that is basically all that I have on the background for this. As the staff report mentions, the item is to adopt the resolution, which would dissolve the naming committee and adopt a new naming policy.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council? Mayor Protem?
So I think it's, one interesting, just an observation first, an interesting thing is that with some naming sorts of things, it can feel, when it's council members, it can feel very incestuous, where everyone's naming, you know, choosing to name things after their colleagues and friends or something like that. And in this case, by having an external group in essence of residents, it puts the council at kind of arms-length, and I would think makes it more neutral, you know, an independent, impartial group that's making the decision. So... So, but that wasn't my question. You had mentioned that the commemorative policy you're removing now, so for benches, for instance, which was highlighted there, you're removing the, the material on that now, but that it'll be brought back and reimagined in a different form in the document you bring up in the spring. That's what, like, because I understand that there was a potential, at least, for more benches on the mesa at one point.
So I think there's two parts to that. The first being kind of a reexamination, neutral of benches or any other things to address sponsorship, donations, commemorative items of different types, not just benches. One thing I think that may have been brought up in a previous council meeting was the idea that on the Elwood Mesa, as part of restoration efforts out there, there's a plan or at least an intent to look at, you know, trails and paths that may have scenic areas that might be appropriate for benches or seating areas, lookout areas, whatever you want to call them. And that would be an opportunity to do that then. We are not at that point yet, but we do want to be able to set the stage in the event that something is approved and has the bind from the community and from the council to be able to act quickly and provide that as one of the settings to do so. So I think there's just a couple of different things, because when we started looking into it, there's a lot of things that can be done, right? There's dedication of a tree or planting of a tree in someone's honor. And we would want to do those things in a careful and sensitive way, obviously, to do native, native species of plants, things of that nature, to be cognizant of the environment and also what the goals of the council are and reflected in the general plan. So we're looking at them from multiple lenses, but in terms of right now, our understanding from the Public Works Department is that the commemorative benches, I think we are satiated right now, and that, and so far at this point, that's being tabled. But that will be resurrected once we see there's other opportunities and that have those opportunities guide the ability to have benches versus the other way around, which is kind of what's happened recently.
So in other words, in the spring, the broader conceptual policy will come forward, and then there'll be a subsequent process of evaluating where it might make sense to do it, let's say on the bluffs, here, here, not there.
Yeah, that's the general plan of what we want to try to do. We want to have the guiding locations be the centerpiece as opposed to people wanting to put things somewhere. We want them to be placed somewhere that makes sense as part of an overall plan.
And I think that's an interesting, said, and there'll also be some things of sponsorships where for fundraising purposes, sort of like Gersh Park does with bricks, and that will be part of the spring.
I think that's part of what we'll be evaluating is how sponsorship opportunities can be done, whether it's one large donor or if it's broken down into more community-driven fundraising events like you mentioned with Gersh Park, they put a brick with the family's name or some sort of message. You see these things a lot often at hospitals and other facilities where sponsorship opportunities recognize their donors.
Yeah, and I think one of the things, just I just tossed this out. I understand you might want to think about having term-limited sponsorships, I gather. When they can sponsor an eternity, it becomes an upkeep kind of thing and so forth. And can you, can we, can I, let's say, choose someone to sponsor, like, somebody, an enemy, and sponsor some poison ivy or something like that, or anyway?
Yeah, I mean, we look forward to having the problem of having to have too much money to deliver a project. We've talked about it for different facilities. One that's often brought up is something like a community pool, things of that nature, where, you know, those are capital-intensive.
Oh, that'd be good. Somebody would want to sponsor that. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you see the majority of these naming applications would be going to Parks and Recreation? But might there be other areas, like historical preservation might be? I'm trying to think of other committees that would be taking this on as well.
Right, as you mentioned, probably a majority would be at Parks and Recreation just because they deal with all our parks and amenities. But you may have other things that cross into the subject matter of our other commissions. Library Advisory Commission comes to mind, HBC you mentioned, and Public Engagement Commission as well. So it just matter, based on the subject matter of the item.
And then we ultimately come back to the full council for.
Yes, exactly.
Would be advisory bodies. And then also too, just in terms of how we have things set up, the Parks and Recreation Commission also oversees the Galita Community Center in terms of policy review and that type of advisory body. So that would be probably another opportunity that would likely go to them.
It sounds like a good idea, yeah. Do we have any public speakers?
Any member on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. Do you have Robert Zayada? Please unmute yourself in your left three minutes.
Yes, hi, Mayor and councilmembers. My concern is, a while back, and I'm trying to remember exactly when, but anyways, along Cathedral Oaks by Dos Pueblos and all the way out to where the maintenance shed for the golf course is, there was a sponsorship drive for trees to be planted along there. And everybody had their own little block with the nice little plaque on it saying, "In memory of," or whatever you say. And you walk by there now, and those blocks are no longer there, the plaques have been torn off. And so I'm just looking at the long run. If somebody donates money for a bench and they put a nice plaque on it, and then they come back five years later and the bench is gone, or their plaque is gone, I'm just, what, you know, I feel sorry for all these people that put out money for these trees, and now they walk by and it looks like a trash yard, really. So I don't know. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually not familiar with that segment of the tree plantings, but I saw some heads nodding, so, you know, obviously some folks are. I think part of what we want to do in any ongoing policy and effort is to make sure we have a robust sections on maintenance, care. When we talked earlier about the art policy, we do have some policies in there about maintaining the art, what would be required. We'd also want to make sure that's translated over to this item as well. We want to avoid awkwardness of people donating something and then having it ruined or defaced or destroyed.
Thank you for that. I mean, Kyle Richards not on? He doesn't have something to say on this one?
Kyle is no longer on the webinar.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I think we are ready for a motion. Who would like to do this? Mayor Protemp? There it is.
So who was the other person who was on the naming committee, by the way? Yeah, so where are we? James says he's on it now.
No, I'm done.
Oh, I'm on it now, and you think you're on it?
I think so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I remember that, that one well. There you, anyway, we're out of work. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 25, next in line, entitled, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Repealing Resolution Numbers 10-43 and 10-54, and Adopting a Revised City of Galita Naming Policy.
And I'll second.
Okay, all right, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please lock in your votes. Councilmember Rayz Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriakko.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protempor Casden.
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti.
Aye. I just have it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are we okay? We don't need a break? We're good? Good, okay.
And that will bring us to item C3, that is the Ordinance to Amend Encampment Vehicle Camping and Administrative Citation Regulations.
Are we ready? I think we are. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and council. I'm here to present tonight our ordinance amendments that we partially discussed at our October 7th meeting. At our October 7th meeting, we talked about utilizing a tool, our administrative citation tool to, to deal with people who are living in their vehicles parked on city streets as well as encamping on public property where prohibited. The concept that we discussed was a forgivable administrative citation in that if somebody got a citation, if they enrolled in the homelessness management information system and other services, we would forgive that citation. And on October 7th, we also talked about bringing back an ordinance to amend some of our codes on encampment and vehicle dwelling to kind of strengthen the language and change the language in light of recent case law. So just really quickly, on the administrative citation tool, we have been working as staff to, of course, first ascertain what services individuals can enroll in, the forgivable aspect of the citation. We've been working to develop a linear process for complaints to come in, how we work with the sheriff's office, and how they'll then work with Chuck, Mr. Flax, to enroll in the services and maintain continuity with the city so that hopefully we can get these individuals to a good place. So on to the ordinance amendments part of tonight's presentation. The substantive, these are the kind of, there were two really major substantive amendments. One was to Chapter 12.01 of our municipal code, where we would change the language from requiring staff to not enforce our codes unless there was adequate shelter available. And we had a caveat to that, an exception, which was the high fire areas. But the crux of the change is about changing the requirement from ensuring there is adequate shelter to enforcing our codes so long as reasonable efforts are made to provide shelter and services. So the next big substantive change is to our vehicle dwelling chapter, and that's 10.04. Our existing language already prohibits dwelling in one's vehicle. What we sought to do in these proposed amendments was to really add some more contours to that code. So we defined what habitating in one's vehicle means. We added indicia of habitation, which would include presence of cooking utensils, sleeping implements, kind of closed, barely cracked, covered up windows, presence of makeshift restroom facilities. And so we just, we worked with sheriffs to indicate that at least two of those factors have to be present in order for there to be a violation. And then thirdly, we removed the towing authority of vehicles used for camping or living. And then these next ones are just kind of minor amendments to conform the codes to the policy direction given. And the main ones were to chapters 1.02 and 2.02. 1.02 is about our administrative citation process. So the changes don't have anything to do really with what we were discussing in terms of encampment and vehicle living, but we want it to clean up that language since we are coming back for an ordinance amendment, might as well throw in the, you know, relevant codes. And that is, there was an assessment lien remedy for people who don't, who have property, public nuisance violations. And there it was, there used to be a method where you could, you could go through the whole administrative citation process and then assess a lien on a certain property. And that's been replaced, state law has replaced that with just file a civil complaint and get your, get paid that way. And then we also included some language to include a recovery of attorney's fees. And that is also state law compliant as well. It's basically including language that the prevailing party of any kind of civil complaint filed for a code enforcement abatement case, the prevailing party could recover fees and costs. And then the next GMC 10.04.010 is our 72-hour parking regulations. And we just added some applicable language regarding towing in there. Next slide, please. There was one minor amendment to 12.01.050. That is, that's, that has to do with the encampment regulations, and we just added some language in there that the department's neighborhood services and the police chief may issue policies and guidelines on enforcement. And then lastly, we added some more detail to encampment along creeks to basically say unpermitted structures, and those are the camp, the way that we, unpermitted structures are camping facilities and camping paraphernalia. That's defined earlier in Chapter 12.01. And basically, those unpermitted structures would not be allowed within 150 feet of a water course. And in our city, that would be creeks. And that concludes my presentation of the amendments for tonight. I'm here for any, and Mr. Flax are here, are here for any questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp?
Yeah, I was curious. Well, first, let me say, I learned the word indicia. I'd never heard that before, so, thank you. But I think one of the things that people are probably most interested in is the administrative citations, and which obviously aren't here. What is going to be the process or where will they be embedded? How will, how will the public see them and comment on them? And how will that get, how will that play out?
We're still developing the process internally, but there will be a number that the non-emergency sheriff number, that's typically how a public member could let the city know that there, there's, that they see a violation and they want us to follow up on it.
But in other words, so right now, it's still being developed and it'll be, it'll, so, and I guess in the future, it'll go to the Homelessness Services Committee for discussion. But then afterwards, for instance, it's not going to become an ordinance. It will be sort of policy, a guidance document or how, what will be the, the product that people can see, for instance, that describes and explains here's when they get this or that or what have you?
I'm going to let Mr. Valdez answer that question.
Yeah, and I'm just, sorry.
And while, and I'll make an attempt to, Councilmember Kazin and councilmembers, if your question is more of a feedback loop, like when will the public see evidence of how many tickets we issued, whether it was success? If that's, that's not the question.
Not really, no.
Okay. Because I'm just going to remind you that we were planning to come back, you know, six or eight months. How many tickets were issued? Was it effective? Maybe do counts of cars out there? A feedback loop will be part of it later, so I guess, maybe I'm not understanding your question then.
Let me, so, did you, I mean, otherwise I can clarify.
I was going to ask for clarification because I think in the original October 7th meeting, we talked about kind of the thresholds to hit the first offense, second offense, third offense. And Ms. Kaya included that in the staff report, I believe it was 100, then 200, then 500. So I don't know if that was your question because that's, that's kind of embedded in our municipal code as it is for, for the administrative citations. So that wouldn't change. And so I wasn't sure what you meant by like a public process for input.
So what you're saying is, as far as the, the cost for the administrative process and what they'd be charged, that is already in our code. And the fact that there's a potential waiver, that's already in our code. It just hasn't been specified or spelled out. And that you'll be coming up with, what are those options, those alternatives and so forth for that process in a, at a future meeting?
I, I thought we had the council's concurrence at the last meeting to
No, to go forward.
And not have to develop that, we just want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I just meant for the public to, that they would see the, is there going to be a document that's produced? I guess I'm thinking back on my experience when I was in the federal government. And you would have anything where there's public facing and there's, you know, controversy. We'd go through a regulatory process and you would, they would post regulations and so forth. And so I was just wondering if there was a parallel here where we would have some sort of process. And, and maybe, this might be completely off base in a sense, that we've got the ordinance and then the other things, the courses or the, or using the HMIS system and simply you'll spell it out on the website and that's the, where it's laid out.
I think we can certainly put up the basic elements of this program on our website. But I think that the, what we discussed in the past and, and it's a fluid, there's kind of flexibility to what the services would qualify to have your citation forgiven. It's just naturally going to fluctuate a little bit given depending on what services are available. So we wanted to keep that list very flexible so that, you know, if, if there weren't any services available, then enrollment in the HMIS would be adequate.
Okay. Thank you. I'll let it go.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you. I think our city manager addressed some of this, but I just wanted to reiterate kind of the question of we're, we're attempting this to, to try to address some challenges we've seen. And so for the council, you know, I'm thinking about how do we measure effectiveness? And so I think that data will be really helpful. So having a very clear kind of time where we will see that data and, it would be helpful for us to hear from staff at that point, like how, how do you look at this data and measure if this is being, this is effective or not? If it's not, you know, what, are there other options we can take? Are you learning anything from other jurisdictions who might also be dealing with some of these similar issues? Or maybe it is effective and then that's great. But those are some of the questions I'm thinking through, like as a policymaker. You know, we take this step and how do we measure if it's, if it's effective? And what should we be looking at? And I think that we'll, we'll certainly hear from the public. And that is, you know, lived experience and perception. And we want to kind of marry that with the data and, and any research that data, that staff can do in your conversations with other jurisdictions that might, might be dealing with similar issues. But I think our city manager addressed that a little bit, that we will have that come back to council in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Carriaco.
Thank you. Most of my questions have been asked and answered at this in previous meetings. I guess really less of a question, more of a comment or a suggestion. I think we really just need to be prepared to monitor what kind of shifts in changes of vehicle locations we see when this, when this happens. I was reminded by a public comment that the ordinance committee had met a couple of years ago and talked about, about this challenge and came up with some recommendations at that time. And when I was looking, when I was looking at that comment, I went back through my email and I found an, a email with photos from a different neighborhood a few days after the ordinance committee had met about the short-term parking. And it was basically saying, oh, look, these vehicles have now moved over to Cortona, and I forget the name of the cross street. You know, people, people are going to move their vehicles, right? So, you know, I, I think that we're, we're moving towards enforcement. We're moving towards trying some different tools. We're trying to balance compassion with the need to have a reasonable expectation to be able to enjoy your neighborhood and to have clean, safe and healthy streets. And it's really about finding that balance. So I really just want to be mindful of being, being clear and cognizant of what is the behavior? Because I don't think we're just going to see people going to New Beginnings to talk to them about the Safe Parking Program or coming to talk to us about getting an administrative citation waived. I think we're also going to just see vehicles just move. And so where are they going to move? I think it would be incumbent upon us to try and anticipate some of those areas. There's areas in Old Town that I can think of. There's areas outside of Old Town and kind of that industrial area off Ward that I can think of. I think we just need to start being prepared for what comes next. So thank you.
I guess my question would be, I'm assuming our, our Safe Parking folks that know a lot of, have met a lot of folks living in their vehicles and, and know where they are, know some of them. And also our, our other city net, I call them the boots on the ground. I would think that they're going to be giving folks a heads up on what's coming. And am I correct? I mean, we're not just going to all of a sudden appear and how's, how's this going to work so there?
Part of our efforts obviously are kind of all-inclusive. We do have a weekly coordination meeting with the folks that you mentioned. Chuck, of course, through his contacts at the county and other, other partners. You know, if, if these changes go ahead and we move forward, there's going to be, you know, the, the telegraphing that we are changing our posture in terms of enforcement. We are aware of certain hotspots in the city. Councilmember Carriaco mentioned some over off of Ward Phelps. I've seen some over by, you know, North Kellogg, South Kellogg. So it's not uncommon to see that there will be some movement. And this kind of all goes back to the question that Councilmember Reyes Martin had about, you know, what's going to be the loop back and what's going to be success? Right now, we have seen in the last two years in particular, a huge increase in vehicular homelessness, much different than what we saw, you know, three, four years before. So we have some of that from the point in time count. We have some of that HMIS. We have some of the Mr. Flax by nameless. So my point being that we have certain areas that we can go back to look at and see have we had increases, decreases, or have they stayed status quo? But this will be the first time where we actually have, you know, folks that will call dispatch and there will be a record of them calling out for it. And so that's different than doing a city assist because you would be able to do that in the evening time on the weekends where city hall is, is closed for the most part unless we're responding to emergencies. So this will be different. And my point being that with those different avenues, we're starting to telegraph that. We have already stated, we do not intend to be punitive from that, from the get-go. But to start setting the stage that ultimately we want to have people pursue services and/or other things that can help them. Or some folks who are just recalcitrant will decide to move on to other places perhaps. But we don't want to just kind of let what I would consider kind of a blind eye approach that's some, some folks have been frustrated with. So hopefully that answers some, if not most of the questions asked.
It does. I'm wondering if somebody from Safe Parking could come up and, and let me know about your capacity to take on, because the idea, right, is that we offer them, you know, either a citation or, or a place that they might be able to go in Safe Parking or, you know, so how are we doing in Safe Parking?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Perotti. So right now we do have some capacity still in our Galita lots, and we do have one lot that we have yet to activate, so to speak, because our lot, other lots have still had capacity. And we do also have additional case management capacity if a lot is full or the lots are full. We would still be able to provide services if not specifically the overnight parking space. And we're constantly trying to bring on new lots. We do have another, a lot in Galita that's coming online with two new spaces, hopefully soon. So we're in process.
Do you have a question?
I do. I, I, it might be, were you about to chime in?
I just wanted to kind of, for the record, make clear that, the way, I think the way the city's really approaching this is a kind of a carrot and stick approach. And so you all will be allowing for a gentle use of a stick. But that the idea is that you also have created the capacity to, to move people if they want to into homeless services. So we have a wonderful partnership with law enforcement. We have a wonderful partnership with New Beginnings and with CityNet. And the intention, I believe, will be that if somebody receives a citation, administrative citation, they would then be directed to contact me personally. Because we're not talking about thousands of people. We're talking about several dozen people, you know, that will take advantage of this. And I will work closely with, with New Beginnings to ensure that that program goes forward. Just to contrast, I heard, I haven't investigated it closely, but Councilman Reyes Martin mentioned, Councilmember, mentioned other jurisdictions. I have heard that the city of Lompoc passed a, did a similar move, but I don't believe they did it in conjunction with any kind of services. So we really are being very mindful of how we're going to move this forward.
Thank you for that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Well, okay.
Do you have?
Yeah, I, I guess one of the things that we were going to try and do from the last one was expand our parking outreach to have, and including commercial sites and, and just other sites. And I was wondering how, how that's going, if we have, or it's a little premature at this point to be asking.
Mayor Protam, Casin, thank you for that question. We are putting the pieces in place as we speak. So knowing the indicia to, to put forward the, you know, the, the gentle stick that I mentioned will allow for that to start to push people towards Safe Parking. As Cassie Roach mentioned, they still have capacity. So it's not like people are rushing and overwhelming our system currently. But you've also passed, and I believe it takes effect, if not now, early next month, I think now, the new process for getting a, a Safe Parking permit. So we, that's all been put in place. We're going to be doing more outreach directly to landowners, letting them know that this is something that we want to be developing. So it is premature to think that we suddenly have acres of parking available. However, we also don't have that demand currently. So we, we are definitely going to be working together to facilitate that.
Yes, but the process has begun. And likewise, along that line, the seven o'clock departure time, has that also been adjusted anywhere?
That was removed from the ordinance by your actions. And then the, the, the rules of each lot will be a negotiated process between this, the New Beginnings program and the plot, the property owner.
And has, have you guys had any interaction with prop, with the property owners? Whether they've, have an interest or a willingness to adjust the 7:00 AM departures?
Yes, we have several lots that, not, one in the Galita area that is open to moving it to a later time. And then other lots that we have already in other jurisdictions have also opted for a later exit time.
Because as we've heard, I think that's one of the things that has made Safe Parking less, less desirable is having to get out and leave by seven. And I get, the last thing is just more for the public is I understand we're going to be thinking of additional carrots that might be possible to lure people rather than to kind of push people to Safe Parking out of streets, but to lure them to make Safe Parking more attractive, and that's forthcoming. Is that?
Mayor Protam, Casin, thank you for constantly and positively reminding us that this is the intention, because I agree with you completely. One of the things that I'm going to, I'm attending a, a state conference in March. And one of my primary objectives of going to that is to find out what incentives are in fact working. We really are kind of on the cutting edge. It may surprise Galitans to know that, but we are. You know, Los Angeles is probably 10 years ahead of us in terms of managing this issue, but interestingly has not had the explosion of Safe Parking programs that I would have expected, given this. So I think that we're, by, the county is also doing a process of investigating more deeply the motivations for people living in their vehicles and what we can do to support them. That's going to be a study that is, pardon the pun, rolling forward in the next couple of months. I, I don't know their exact schedule for that. And of course, everything is kind of on hold with government problems, et cetera. But the idea is that we all recognize that this is the forefront or the, the real head of this large problem that, that continues to grow. And there's tremendous collaboration around this, trying to figure out a way to really, you know, get our arms around it and, and solve it. So I, I always appreciate your support and I think we will come up with new incentives.
That's great. Actually, it is kind of funny. I think of, you know, as they said about LA, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot. At least we can use that parking lot productively. Anyway, and I did have one other thought, but I'll let it go. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the public, if we have any public speakers.
Those of you on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I do have Michael Brown. Please unmute yourself and he'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm speaking tonight to express my extreme disappointment in the council concerning the issue of persons parking and living in their vehicles on city streets, specifically Phelps Road. This issue has been ongoing for over two years with very little effective action taken by the council despite repeated pleas from the residents and the affected neighborhood. On January 23rd, 2024, at an ordinance review standing committee meeting, city staff recommended the following, and this is a quote. Regarding Phelps Road between Pacific Oaks and Cannon Green Drive, staff recommends clarifying and implementing no parking anytime on both sides of the street by posting red curb and no parking anytime signage where possible and appropriate, end of the quote. This was a perfect solution to the problem and within the issue of trash, human waste and noise. However, Mr. Kazin and Mr. Carriaco, councilmembers of this committee, took it upon themselves to amend this to only a restriction on large vehicle parking, thereby allowing persons who live in other types of vehicles to continue to park and live in their cars on Phelps, an incredibly unwise decision to say the least, and the full council decided to agree with them. Of course, the problem still exists and worsens. Now the proposed solution is to issue forgivable and administrative tickets to individuals. It is unlikely that these tickets will motivate any individual who has refused services, especially since, as stated by Deputy Warden at previous council meeting, the ticket must be personally delivered to the individual. So all this person has to do is avoid or ignore the deputy and nothing can be done. Also, the mayor stressed that this would be a complaint-driven activity and not actively patrolling for this. and not actively patrolling for this violation. It is beyond my comprehension why this must be so, as we're all well aware where the problem exists. For example, Phelps Road. The mayor also stated she didn't want the deputies to be the bad guy, that's her quote, by patrolling to enforce the provisions, which is an incredible statement for a city official to make concerning law enforcement. Sometimes being the bad guy, to use her words, is part of the job of law enforcement. It's also incredible to me that you've concluded, included in your changes to the ordinance, and I quote, "In addition, in compliance with council direction, the concept of towing someone's vehicle in response to a violation has been removed." Accordingly, someone who is dwelling or camping in their vehicle and parked on a public street would not be towed under any circumstances for a violation. Towing is the only effective motivating tool to get an individual to accept services and remove them from city streets. Your misplaced compassion of allowing individuals the option of refusing services and living on the streets is not humane. Is my time up?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I have no more speakers for this item, Mayor.
Right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to clarify with respect to the speaker, just two points. As far as the idea of whether or not it would have been appropriate for us to ban all parking along that area, there's two things, two factors to consider. If by simply saying those, that street, that stretch of road was going to be banned from parking, sure, it would alleviate the burden on that particular street. It doesn't mean it solves anything, as Councilmember Karyako mentioned before. You simply move people a block away. You move people to a different area. Our problem is not just one corner, one portion of a street. It's getting people from inappropriate areas, all residential areas, into safe parking locations. Safe, the Safe Parking locations are better, not just for the neighborhoods, the residents, but they're better for the people who are living in their vehicles. And so it is, it's a solution that is kind of a win-win solution, and that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to play whack-a-mole in which we just move people around. The other thing to keep in mind is that the, a lot of cars use that stretch of road for parking. And, you know, I think particularly Elwood Beach Drive and Matilda, they have such limited parking there that a lot of them spill over and park in that area. So it's really challenging to say we would just ban parking, certainly without a big public hearing and a large discussion. That, anyway, so I hear what you're saying. We're not trying to neglect your, the neighborhood. We recognize there's an issue there. And I think that the the solution that we've come up with is one to get people to move out of that area. We'll have an ability, we're doing everything we can to get them to move out of their area. But we want them to move out of that area into a location that's preferable for the city as a whole, the Safe Parking locations, and not just a block away. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Councilmember Kazin, I think summed up some of the thoughts that I shared as well. So, so thank you for sharing that, because I think it's important to understand this. This is a, this is, we know where the hotspots are, but there's, there's places all over the the city. And I can speak for myself, as the newest council member, that my my concern about no parking zones would be sort of the whack-a-mole issue, and which we we may still have even with this approach. So I I think I would call to the public to say, you know, we are, if we pass this tonight, you know, that we're, you know, committed to to see how this process unfolds and, you know, and then we'll have a report back. And we can reevaluate, we can adjust and go from there. So, and I think to that point, that I think particularly as we look next year in terms of work planning and budgeting, there's sort of, is the ongoing question of how do we prevent people, you know, from falling into the circumstance where they're living in their vehicle? It's it's so much more cost-effective if we can try to get ahead of these issues. And it's very clear, right, that this, this problem is ongoing. And as we've seen in so many contexts where it's like, oh, we're getting people into shelter, and then more people are, you know, falling over the cliff. So I do, I do think we need to continue to look at ways to keep, to keep people housed, particularly those who are low income or have other vulnerabilities, who have disabilities, who are seniors and others. To keep people in their current housing, I think, needs to continue to be a high priority so that we're preventing people from falling over the cliff. Otherwise, we're just going to keep, you know, just, it's just going to keep happening. So, so I would just urge us to continue. It's, I think, most sort of visible on this, on this backend, right? And it's, and it's, and I, and I, and I'm sorry, you know, that it is. It is, we do not want people to feel unsafe, you know, in their own homes, you know, or to come across, you know, unsanitary conditions. So, you know, I think, based on our previous direction, that we're going to try this approach, see how it goes. And I can speak for myself that I think we're committed to continue to evaluate, you know, are we, is this approach better, you know, getting people out of their vehicles and into Safe Parking or Shelter? But at the same time, I think we need to commit to, and maybe based on some of this data that comes from the county, looking at, because there's some unique factors related to this population, that we need to continue to commit to, how are we keeping vulnerable populations in their current housing? So I would just stress that. The other issue I want to raise about towing, staff did alert us that there, you know, there's, we're subject to certain state laws as it relates to towing. So that had been discussed at a previous meeting. And then, and that by that same token, we don't want to tow somebody's vehicle and then have them shift out to the bluffs into an unsheltered situation, and then maybe they're starting a fire on the bluffs. So we're trying to strike that right balance. And, and this may or may not be the right approach. So I want to to thank the commenter for continuing to to highlight this issue for us and raising our awareness about this. And, you know, I think we're, you know, committed to continuing, to take a hard look at this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Karyako?
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add, because it's been so eloquently stated by Councilmember Smith and Mayor Protem Kazin. I'll just say this. One of the most important jobs of this council and your city government is to ensure safe and healthy and clean neighborhoods. That is a fundamental, fundamental part of the job. You also have to balance that with state law, federal law, which are sometimes shifting, and the broader needs of the entire community. And it's about trying to strike that balance, as was, as was stated earlier. So I, what I see this policy as doing is furthering the striking of that balance, putting a little bit more policy out there, providing some more tools for our nonprofit community and our law enforcement community to be able to try some different tactics and see if we can achieve better success so that all of our neighborhoods can be safer and cleaner, but also so that more of our residents can be themselves safe and healthy and get the support and help that they need. I think this is an effectively, this is a potentially effective way to strike that balance. I still have some concerns, I still have some reservations, but we're going to try this. We're going to learn, and we'll see how it goes, and we can, we can readdress this again. Hang on, we'll see how it works.
Thank you. Well, I think everybody's pretty much said how I feel. You know, I have, having sat and continued to sit on the homelessness committee, we struggle to find that balance. We, we want our community to feel, you know, a public safety, that they're safe. And, you know, that's what we were elected to do. But we also have, we feel that criminalizing homelessness is not something we want to do either. You know, they all have, like I've said, they all have their own story to tell. And I, I do want to clear up one, one misunderstanding by Mr. Brown. I think my comment was taken a little bit out of complex, out of context about the deputies being the bad guys. We have an incredible community resource deputy who has, over the years, built a relationship and has been able to get a lot of these folks services. And it takes time to build that relationship. So there was some comment at some point that, you know, maybe our deputy would, that our resource officer would be the one that would be issuing the citations because he knows them, and that's when I made the comment, is like, we don't want him to be the bad guy. So I didn't, I wasn't referring to all our deputies. And I'm sure if Deputy Warden had, actually had a situation that required an arrest and there was a public safety, he would do it. But he also has this relationship, and he's been really valuable to getting people housed and into services. So that was where that came from, so I wasn't referring to all deputies. And a lot of our situations are complaint-driven. We just don't have the bandwidth to, I don't know how, you know, we know where the hotspots are, and I think our law enforcement do as well. So, so I think they'll be on the lookout, but I'm, I'm all about, let's just see how this goes. It's a hard decision to make to do this, but we have an obligation to do something. And and it's where the, the benefit, our folks experiencing homelessness. They, this is no way to live either, and it's not safe for them. So let's give this a try. And I think our city manager said we might be coming back in a few months and see, you know, get some kind of a report on how's it going. I would like to see that.
I think it was in the motion, Madam Mayor, I recall, six to eight. And if that's still okay with council, we'll shoot for that timeframe.
Yeah, it's going to take a little while just to kind of see how it all works out.
It will, it will.
Okay, all right. I guess we're ready for a motion, unless there's any other comments or questions?
I can, I can. Okay. I move that we introduce and conduct the first reading by title only, waiving further reading of ordinance number 25 next in line entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Goleta, California, Amending Chapter 1.02 of Title 1, Chapter 2.02 of Title 2, Chapter 10.04 of Title 10, and Chapter 12.01 of Title 12 of the Goleta Municipal Code Regarding Administrative Citations and Camping and Vehicular Camping on City Property and Finding the Ordinance Categorically Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act."
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, do lock in your votes, please. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Karyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Port Kazin?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye.
Okay, I have it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I want to make one more point before you move on to the last item. I keep forgetting, but I have a great staff and they keep reminding me. So going back a month to the meeting that preceded this meeting, at the beginning of the item, I introduced the item, had the staff report, a lot of discussion, public comment went on for about two hours. At the beginning, I said, there's one side issue that we don't want to let slip through the cracks any, any longer. And that was the question about going to the Coastal Commission to get permission to extend the block of where we could put those signs. And it, it had kind of swirled around. And so at the beginning, I said, you know, we're happy to do that if that's, you know, if council wants us to do that. It could be a lot of work, on the other hand. Maybe the, maybe we get to staff and they say, you know what, we're going to make this easy on, you know, we just don't know. But we didn't want to raise the expectations that it was an easy ask. Sometimes you go to Coastal Commission, and when it has to do with parking, it can be a bear. I said I would remind the council to make sure we had clear direction at the end of the item. I forgot, I was about to forget again tonight. I think I saw head nods that night. But we will, if I, with concurrence from council, we will put that on planning's potential work plan for next year and start the process. And again, if it's easy, maybe just through some staff conversations, we are talking to them quite a bit right now because of the LCP. So our relationship is pretty good right now with them. So maybe we can get going on that. But yes, just wanted to concur, I forgot to do that. I'm seeing full head nods, we don't need a vote. That's something we're going to pursue, and, but it might take us into 2026.
And I, and I do want to make one comment that I forgot as well about the, there was a comment about the fencing that was put up for Halloween. That fencing was put up by the university, and we had nothing to do with that. So just a heads up that it wasn't us that put that fencing up. Okay, you did it, you did it. All right, thank you. Okay?
As do I.
Oh, okay. That's a member, Karyako?
I have clicked on. I just want to make sure, people that that weren't aware, when I missed, missed the last city council meeting, I know there was some reporting in the media. I was attending the Cal LaFco Conference, representing Santa Barbara County LaFco, which is a collection of cities, city and county, and special district representatives that work on agricultural issues, orderly jurisdictional lines, and other important matters. I spoke about Measure G at the conference. I was a panelist for the Friday session, which was entitled, "From, From the Farm to the Front Porch: How to Balance Agriculture with Housing", and spoke about Measure G and about the intended effects of Measure G and some of the effects that maybe people didn't expect. I think some people voted for Measure G and thought there would be no more building in Goleta, and there has been infill housing in Goleta. But there's also been a lot of preservation of agriculture because of, because of Measure G. And so there was a lot of interest from both panelists and representatives of LaFcos from across the state. A lot of people were asking me about Measure G and how it worked. And so I wanted to share that here as a council comment. But it was, it was a great conference, and I learned a lot. And I look forward to bringing that information and knowledge back to Goleta and back to Santa Barbara County.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. I just wanted to report out and give some thank yous for the coffee and community event that we hosted this last weekend in District 1 at the Stow House Ranch Yard. A huge thank you to our community relations team and all of the staff that attended. Thank you for being so generous with your time on a Sunday morning. It was very, very well attended. We had the library book van, we had, firefighters were there to answer questions, too. A big thank you to the Goleta Valley Historical Society and Christina's Bakery. I think there were great, great attendance, great conversations. It's a beautiful morning, it finally felt a little more like fall. So it was nice to have some hot chocolate and some pan dulce. So just thank you, I'm so glad that we do these kinds of events. I think every time that I've had one in my district, I've met new people, new neighbors, and we've had such positive response from folks who really like attending, like getting to know, not just the council and our mayor, but the staff in a more casual setting and kind of know who everyone is. It's just really positive. So thank you so much for everyone for helping organize that.
I'll echo what you said, because I've heard that from many, that they really appreciate us coming out to them and being able to talk with staff. So it's always a great event. I want to report that I was invited, along with the mayor of Carpinteria, to host a table at the Boys and Girls Club Teen Expo Fair. And it was a lot of different agencies there, and it was mainly a conversation about, what would you like to be, why are you, you know, possibilities for the teens, what, you know, they were interested in, and asked the people in those positions, how they, what they thought about it, what did they like about it? It was It was really, really very informative. They had a lot of great questions, and, and the mayor from, I will say, the mayor from Carpinteria, she gave out really cool swag, she gave out really cool sunglasses, and we gave out silverware.
You're bitter.
They kind of liked it, but they were like, they really went for the sunglasses, so, but they, they were great. They, they were asked some really good questions. It was a fun event. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to flag that, I know, the city is hosting tomorrow the webinar on the, our tenant protection ordinance. So for any, you know, landlords or tenants or others who might be interested in learning more, that is tomorrow.
Thank you for that.
Lunchtime.
Okay. City manager, do you have anything? Mr. Rosen, do you have any comments?
I did want to shout out our Galita's own city clerk, Deborah Lopez, who's assisting folks exercise their democratic rights as part of today's election, and also thank our deputy clerk for stepping in.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, meeting adjourned.